This is the meeting of March 23rd, 2020. Ladies and gentlemen, in pursuit to the applicable portions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been given. This meeting is posted on the bulletin board located in the corridor of this building, published in the newspaper on January 10th, 2020, and it's also posted on the website. Councilwoman Noonan will offer a prayer, and Councilman Burns will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Just a quick prayer to hope that we all get through this and help the ones that are really sick, and our military who have also got the virus. God bless us all. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
To the republic which stands.
We would just stand.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
And just as.
Okay. Roll call first. Councilman Bakion.
Here.
Councilwoman Gingrich is absent. Councilman Burns?
Here.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Here.
Councilman Guadano?
Here.
By phone. Councilman Gross?
Here.
By phone. And Council President Bucio?
Here.
By phone as well. Now, because the Vice President and the Council President are at this meeting remotely, we would ask for a motion for someone to nominate somebody to run the meeting.
I nominate Lauren to run the meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll start with item number four, discussion by administration.
Item 4A is cancellation of taxes for 100% disabled vets for four specific properties. One is Block 4.263, Lot 23. One is Block 5.01, Lot 41. One is Block 518, Lot 8, for 50% of the deduction. And the last is Block 1232, Lot 3. The total includes expunging $4,633.88 for the combined four for the 100% disabled vets, and that is on the official agenda, number 19.2 through 19.5.
Thanks, Fred. Item B is approval of a sidewalk café application. We initiated the ordinance last year. Only Abbey's Restaurant in South Seaside Park applied last year. They were approved. It seemed to go well, and this is an annual application they have to redo, so this would be for the 2020 season, and it's on the official agenda as item number 19.6.
Item 4C are two shared service agreements, the first one being with the Ocean County Prosecutor's Program for what used to be known as the Fatal Accident Support Team. This is for police services. That is on the official agenda, number 19.8. And the second one is with the Borough of Ocean Gate for the collection of delinquent water charges. There are a number of properties that are in the township of Berkeley which receive water from the Borough of Ocean Gate, and from time to time there are delinquencies, and it has to be put into the Township of Berkeley's tax sale. And this is on the official agenda, number 19.9.
Letter D is appointing special law enforcement officers, Class 1, and approving them to go to the Ocean County Police Academy. It's Anthony Segil, Phoenix LaRaca, Patrick Davis, Evan Sicknick, Jaden Harris, and Michael Solomon, and that's on the official agenda as item number 19.10.
When's the academy start, John?
The chief is on.
The academies have all been postponed at this point. The people we had in there for a Class 2 academy, they have CC Academy, they are trying to expedite the classes that are still remaining for the two Class 2s we had in the academy, but as of right now, there is no information.
Okay, thank you.
Item E is approving and supporting the Ocean County Natural Lands Trust to acquire Block 796, Lots 25 and 26. They're off to Berkeley Avenue by the Barnegat Rail Trail. They're properties that are privately owned, but when the county is looking to purchase, they ask for support from the municipality, since, of course, they then come off of our tax rolls. These are both in areas that are well-suited and were recommended, you would give that approval, and your chance to do it will be on official agenda as item number 19.7.
Item 4F is authorizing foreclosures by summary proceedings and in-rem tax sale certificates. These are, again, municipal tax lien properties that are old. Some of them go all the way back to 2011, and there are 20 properties which we will turn over to our foreclosure attorney to start foreclosure proceedings in rem, and that is on the official agenda, number 19.11.
Letter G is authorizing the use of township equipment by the Bayville Volunteer First Aid Company, Fire Company, number 1. It's on the official agenda as 19.12, and they just, for some work they were doing over at their firehouse, they needed to borrow our lift and some scaffolding.
Yeah, John, when that request came in, I had added that we should do a generic resolution giving the administration latitude to do this for our volunteer services, so we wouldn't have to rush to get something on the agenda. Whatever happened to that, Lauren?
I can't. Somebody go.
You're not live.
Yeah, there we go. Can you hear me now? John, just turn yours. I had one ready to go for the next meeting, because I thought that we were trying to keep it a little less on for this one, so if we wanted to include it in this one, it can be included. Otherwise, I do have it ready for the next meeting.
Okay.
If it's okay, Mayor, I'd say let's stick with doing it at the next meeting, just because then we don't have anything that's not here tonight for, you know, getting signed by everybody. It'd be cleaner.
Okay.
Great. Item H is the Bayville First Aid Squad coin tosses on municipal roads May 9th and 10th with rain dates of May 23rd and 24th at the intersection of Forest Hills Parkway and Grand Central Parkway, and that's on the official agenda as item number 19.13.
Item 4I are bid authorizations, and there's three of them. One is for a new 2021 unused automated refuge collection system, cabin chassis, 66,000 pounds, gross free. And the other one is for a 2021 also, back-front axle tandem axle rear loader, refuge truck with plow. And, John, let me talk about three.
Number three is a unique one. We had a Bayville resident ask about the idea of a new business where they would deliver beach chairs, umbrellas, and different kinds of things to the ocean beach. I was familiar with concessions through the years where sometimes a township would give property or leased property to a person to be able to do those kinds of rentals. This is a newer concept where they want to do deliveries of these things, so at first blush, it seemed like, well, they could just do that with no approvals, but then in discussions with the prospective Lees, they said that they would, what they foresaw was an issue with, like, needing parking accommodations or something to, when they were delivering the items and setting them up. So we thought it was better practice, and I had discussions with Lauren, that we would go out to bid, we'll work up some parameters that can fit into the idea of what these people want to do, so that other people could have the opportunity if they want to. We'll go out to bid and then be able to award it if everybody's comfortable with that, and that's on the official agenda. Did you mention?
I did 1914 and 15, so this would be item number 19.16.
Letter J is authorizing a jurisdictional agreement for highway maintenance with the NJDOT. This is all South Seaside Park-related stuff. This one, too, was good news when the state wanted to go into what's a standard jurisdictional agreement whereby they say they redid Route 35 there in South Seaside Park, and that they would be responsible for the maintenance, meaning the upkeep of the roads, including sweeping and plowing. We asked for a special accommodation over there because we already had concerns and could see that the state was not going to maintain the island areas to the way we wanted and our residents expected, so they gave us an agreement whereby, even though it's their property, we get the maintenance ability and upkeep responsibility for the islands, and that includes the parking in the islands. So we could do and maintain and add to or change any of the landscaping we want over there, and we have complete control on how we work the parking. And that one's on the official agenda as item number 19.18. Letter K, this is the start, oh, no, letter K is also a resolution, and that's giving timetables that the State Planning Commission required, and it goes from very soon to all the way through 2022. It just lays out the dates when we would be doing certain updates to our plan to keep our, all of our certifications and our town centers in place. So this just gives a timetable that the state is requesting for when we would be undertaking certain planning initiatives, and that's on the agenda as item number 19.25. Letter L is the start of several ordinances. They've all gone through the Legislative Committee, and I'll briefly touch, even though it's just the introduction, on what each one is. Letter L would be an ordinance codifying the fact that there will be no charge for disabled vets who request and get a beach buggy permit. That one's on the official agenda as item number 13. Letter M is permitting parking on the west side of Deale Avenue. It's essentially negating an ordinance that was passed recently, which restricted parking on the west side of Deale Avenue, and subsequent to that ordinance being adopted and enforced, we got several complaints from residents, and after review, it was decided that we should try and rescind that, or put in front of you to rescind that ordinance, and I did make traffic safety aware of the fact that we were taking, administration would be putting in front of you a different position on that one, and that's on the official agenda as item number 12. Letter N is another ordinance amending the way we charge for police outside work, meaning when they work for a contractor and are paid by that contractor, but it's paid through our payroll. It never said the actual amount that they would charge hourly for their work in the ordinance, which there should at least be a range. It came to our attention because the PBA wanted to increase the rate, and they wanted to increase it to $70 an hour, so, which is still relatively on the low side compared to other departments that we saw, and to leave some flexibility there, we, the suggestion is for you to do an ordinance that would allow for a range from 70 up to $100 an hour, so that it could be adjusted as needed without going back for another ordinance change, and that's on the official agenda as item number 14. The next ordinance introduction is codifying the ability to have a memorial plaque on township property. We had done this as a trial last year when people requested it, and it worked out well, and several other people have requested it. It needs to be codified. After discussion with the Legislative Committee, the ordinance that's in front of you calls for a $100 fee to have that memorial plaque done, and in addition to that, you, the person getting the plaque would have to pay the cost of the plaque to make sure that work covered, no matter what the plaque costs and what style they pick, if we have several styles available. That's on the official agenda as item number 15. Letter P is an ordinance setting the fire prevention fees for non-life hazard uses. Brian Kubel, the new fire official, went through, apparently the rates that were there for non-life hazard had not been adjusted in decades, it seems, and when we look at a comparison of other towns and the costs of running the department, these are very modest increases, which, again, make it so the department can function better, but also keep our fees very reasonable, and that's on the official agenda as item number 16. Letter Q is codifying a $40 fee to be charged for fire prevention when code enforcement does the inspections for resales or rentals. That's been the protocol that we've used, rather than sending two inspectors out, when somebody from code enforcement goes out for resale or rental, they also check for the smoke detectors, the fire extinguishers, and the CO2 detectors. Again, Brian, we went over with him. He's comfortable with the idea that the code, people can do those inspections, and the fee had just never been codified, so $40 seemed like a fair and reasonable fee that is now, will now be on the books once you approve the ordinance, and if you do, it's on the official agenda as item number 17. Letter R is the last of the ordinance introductions being recommended. They're for some minor adjustments to the recreation fees. They've all been vetted through the Legislative Committee as well as the Recreation Committee, but I do have a couple minor amendments that, after more discussion with administration, we'd like to recommend some minor changes to the ordinance you have in front of you. On page 2, while it was felt and supported that we should increase the preseason badge to $35 from the $30, the mayor had some really good input, got to give credit where it's due, and thought that at the same time, we should adjust the date that you could get them from May 15th to May 31st. That way, we'll always have Memorial Day covered, and the biggest complaint we've ever gotten from any people about the preseason badge purchases was that the May 15th cutoff date was too early. So if we add, if we change that May 15th to May 31st, that would be the first change. And then on page 4, if we add in Section 26-1.12, letter D, small letter D, which references the Manitoba basketball charges, that never went through Legislative or Recreation, so I talked to Councilwoman Noonan, since it was her ward, and the recommendation is to keep, make it clear that the resident fee for that program is $70. It was on the books at only, I think, 35, and then clinics, so the fee would be $70 for residents and $100 for non-residents. And Councilwoman Noonan was comfortable with that, and administration is comfortable with that, so we put that part to you for your consideration. And the last thing was, it just, I know it's minor, but in, on the same page, Section 26-1.13, the recommendation was to raise the senior program registration from $10 to $15, but when we looked at the numbers, considering the fact that while it's still very, very reasonable, if it upsets even one or two seniors that are used to paying $10 a year, it didn't really seem worth it, because there's not enough people that that extra $5 is really going to change our bottom line in any way. So the recommendation is to leave that at $10.
So that part will be.
Oh, I get what I heard.
Yeah. And that gives me a break to tell you that that ordinance introduction is item number 18. Then I can hand it over to Fred.
Okay. Authorizing a storm recovery reserve funds as per NJSA 40A 4-621 for the coronavirus response. But this essentially is, if a municipality has a storm remove reserve fund, which we do, we can attach it to a snow, I'm sorry, a snow removal reserve fund, we can attach it to a newly established storm reserve, a storm recovery reserve fund. This way, we could pay all of the coronavirus expenses out of this, it'll be an easier way of tracking it, and the good thing here is that we have a few hundred thousand dollars left in our storm reserve, a snow reserve. Fortunately, we didn't even use anything this year from that reserve, so what I'd want to do is just take some of the money out of the snow reserve, put it into the storm reserve, and essentially, depending on where the costs go, we have some seed money if not being able to pay off all of the expenses for the coronavirus as it hits us right now, which won't hit the taxpayers at all, because the money's already been raised through taxation and put into a reserve. So far, we haven't been hit real hard with expenses. Again, it's early, but at least the reserve funds will be there, and they'll hit on the taxpayers. And that is on the official agenda, number 19.17.
Letter T, I'll touch on all three bills, which we are hoping you'll consider supporting, and then if any councilpeople, I know Councilman Burns has been really involved in the concerns with the student dropout for sure and all these things, but, and Councilman Gross had a lot of input, too, from the policing, so if anybody has any comments, I'll leave that to you, but I'll quickly just touch on the fact that the three bills, number one is Bill A 616, and that's having a task force to deal with student dropout prevention and re-engagement. Item number two is Bill S 205. That's amending the Megan's Law notification requirement, so that that can be done via email. And number three is supporting Bill S 364, increasing the fines and imprisonment for time, imprisonment time for leaving the scene of accident, and that one essentially takes it from a second-degree offense to, which could get $150,000 fine in five to 10 years, up to a first-degree defense, offense, which would get you a maximum of $200,000 fine and 10 to 20 years imprisonment for leaving the scene of an accident when there's a death involved. Those three are on the official agenda as items numbers 19.19, 19.20, and 19.21, but I didn't know if anybody else wanted to comment, or if I should roll on.
For the substitute, substitute chair, when I introduced those last meetings, I gave a brief speech on each, so I probably don't need to waste your guys' time with that again. I do thank the council for fully supporting me for those three bill endorsements. They're all a good idea, and that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilmen, and if I can, quickly, before Fred moves on to item U, Fred put in front of me, and I believe they've been changed in your packet, but just to be sure that on Resolution 20-15, his copy still had the 50 to 85 range when it had been changed to 70 to 100, so I think they have the correct ones in front of them, but wanted to be sure. And on 20-18, same thing, they used to say $45, was changed to $40.
Right, the correct ones were emailed.
Yep, and we read it into the record, just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
For you. For you. Is amending professional service contract for in-rem foreclosure attorney. This amends the contract to include provisions of the applicable court rule. Lauren, maybe you want to brief us on that?
Somebody needs to turn off again, please. Thank you. Sure, so I received a phone call requesting that the contract be amended to refer to the court rule, which actually allows for payment where it's not going to be an hourly rate. What happens is, you are, the township is paid based upon how they, how they receive monies through the foreclosure. So if somebody redeems the certificate prior to going through the official foreclosure, it is set by, that is set by statute, I believe it's $350 per certificate, and if they go through the entire foreclosure, then it's $500 per certificate, and the monies, the way the contract will be amended is, it will reference the statute, and it would also provide that the proceeds that the township receives, that's where the attorney will be paid from, so it's not actually coming from the general, it's coming from the monies that the township's receiving at the end of the foreclosure process.
Thank you. For V are appointments, is two appointments, one for an affordable housing attorney, to appoint Michael Genciniak of Carluccio de Mon, and also to appoint township architects, one to Yezzi Associates LLC and Santa Brino Associates, and those are on the official agenda, number 19.23 and 19.24. Item for W is a general bond, general obligation Series 2020. It's a, it's a bond resolution, adopting the procedures and the amounts to bid for bond ordinances, permanently financing issues. The original plan was to go out to bond, $10,432,000. However, because of the bond market's fluctuation, despite the T-bills going way, way, way down, the municipal market is going quite the opposite direction. Fear of what the market may or may not do, not understanding municipal bonds, which are probably more guaranteed than any of the else that's out there, doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but it also, because of that, doesn't make any sense to go out to bond anyway. The resolution is still on the agenda, just in case there is a window of opportunity to go out to the bond market earlier, although I don't see it. What I'm going to do is take the bonds that we have right now, the bands, and just roll them over for one more year. Still, there's some stability in the municipal bond market, but the municipal bond laws does allow us to go out three months prior to the expiration of those bands to go out and refinance these issues.
Hey, guys, the people who are on the phone, please mute, please mute your phones. There's a hell of a lot of background noise, please. You guys got to mute, mute your phones, please.
And that is why the resolution is still on the agenda, despite what the market is. We're not going out to do anything until the market is ripe, and that is on the official agenda, number 19.25.
Thanks, Fred. Letter X is two resolutions, 20-160, which is supporting events within the township for Solzational Festival, waiving permit fees and authorizing the use of two golf carts, as well as 161, which is just approving their picnic application for the Solzational Music and Wellness Festival. I don't have the updated one in front of me, but are they on the official as 19.26 and 27?
26 and 27, yes.
Yes, so, thank you, and that concludes the report by administration.
John, sorry, a second, John.
Sure.
Hey, Fred.
Yes.
What about the Joey Valinsky refund, member from the summer camp?
I believe he's on the bill list.
He's on the bill list, all right.
Through to Chair. If I could add one, if the council feels fit. Some time ago, the VA sent me to a surgeon in Ocean County for surgery. I went through all the pre-admission, whatever, and when it came time for the surgery last week, I was to go to Jersey Shore, and we find out that Meridian Hackensack is not part of the Veterans Administration's network. So the VA calls me, they give me another doctor from Monmouth County that I don't know, and they said you have to have it done in Robert Wood or any other hospital besides Meridian Hackensack, which includes Southern Ocean, Brick, and Jersey Shore. So, you know, this sounds a little ridiculous, but a veteran can't go into any of those hospitals for more than 23 hours. So I'd like a resolution to our two congressmen, Kim and Smith, the Freeholders, and, you know, right down the line, but this is ridiculous, you know, that.
How would you like that resolution to read?
Whatever Lauren wants to write.
It would be to request them to be included in the Veterans Network, is that what you were to ask?
Yeah. I'll second it.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gingrich? Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bucio?
Yes.
Okay, and one other issue, now that this Corona thing's going on, the Veterans Administration is doing the telephone. So you can imagine a 85, 90-year-old vet, that he's got to go through this video conference. It's not going to happen, so I had talked to the freeholders about maybe they should put a, somebody on the road for a wellness check or something, or at least call these guys, but I talked to a doctor today, he was on with one hour, with one vet on a video conference, so that was just a point of interest. Thank you.
Okay, next item, discussion by township engineer.
Thank you. Item A is a word of a contract to Johnson Baron Corporation. This is for the improvements to Van Buren Avenue in the amount of $131,915.33. This project was performed by one of the consultants in the engineering pool, Penone Associates, and it's on the official item 19.1, and this project is funded through the 2019 capital budget. Thank you.
Through the chair for the engineers, this is my last one here. The Main Street project, Pam from R&amp;V, we have to go through a vegetation inspection or review.
Submerge the product vegetation study.
So we recommended that it go to a no-power boat park and ramp for two reasons. Once, it'll breeze right through the DEP with the permit, and second, it would take us out of competition. I know R&amp;V is renovating the ramp on Sloop Creek, and we don't want to compete with other marinas that have ramps. When people buy a ramp, they buy ice and whatever, so if we could include that to a no-power boat, whatever, Allen wants to write it up.
I just have one question. I know that you're requesting, or you're, I guess, making a motion, but my question is, do you need an official resolution, Allen, or would the minutes suffice?
I think the minutes will suffice for now.
Okay.
But if I need a resolution, I'll come back.
Okay, thank you.
Lauren, just do it as a resolution.
You could. Might as well.
You have one more, right? Y, Z.
Okay, so Councilman Burns made the motion, do we have a second? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Okay. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Yes.
Okay. The meeting is now open for public comments. I will note that there are no members of the public that are here, and he's an employee, I'm sorry, but, and we did provide notice on our website that people could email Karen up until the time of this meeting, so I'm just asking Karen if there were any comments that she received.
No comments, and as of right now, they're on the name, it's 6:33.
Okay.
Can I make a motion for?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, yeah, that was a motion to close the public comment and the meeting?
Comments.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Hang on, can I ask you all, mayor, I know usually we have the mayor's comments before they close the caucus, or is that usually only?
No, it's during the caucus.
Usually now, right, so just wanted to make sure it wasn't missed. Did you want to make any comments before they closed the caucus?
Just, yeah, just a quick 30 seconds, I just want to thank all of our employees, our police, EMS, OEM, Public Works, Recreation, and everybody else for their patience and understanding as we deal with the coronavirus situation. It is a fluid situation that changes by the hour, changes by the day. As of today, we had three confirmed cases of coronavirus in Berkeley Township, which, if you could all knock on wood, that continues to be three as we progress. I just want to put on record and thank all of the leadership of the homeowners associations, because I reached out to them either by telephone, or by email, or on Facebook, to ask them to close up and suspend all activities, because we really need to do whatever we can do to lessen the curve on the coronavirus, and all of them got on it right away. I think one clubhouse had events that weekend that they finished, and then that Sunday, they closed all the activities, because, you know, the coronavirus is very, could be very deadly to those 65 and older with underlying medical conditions. So, you know, we did what we could to get the word out there, we continued to update it either through the police department's Facebook, through the town Facebook, through our website, whenever we get updates from the governor's office. So I just want to go on record by thanking everybody for their understanding and support and patience during this process, because it is a fluid process and changes by the day. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, yes, Councilman Noonan.
About that, there were people going around knocking on the doors for the scam, telling them, they were telling people, right, Carmen, about taking their temperature, checking for the virus. We had to send a notice out by the police department. They were literally knocking on the doors.
Yeah, there is, unfortunately, because of the coronavirus situation, there's several scams that either reemerge or new scams, and as Councilwoman Noonan had mentioned, there was allegedly people knocking on doors saying, hey, I'm from the CDC, give me some money and I'll test you for coronavirus, which is outrageous. But I know our detective bureau is continuing to follow up. I put something out the other day in the newspaper that, you know, please be cognizant of the scams. If anybody thinks they're a victim of a scam or were approached about a scam, the police contact the detective bureau through our, through the hotline or the tip line, and then they'll be followed up with in a normal fashion. So I just want to, once again, thank everybody for the patience.
Thank you, Mayor. Then I guess if we could just do another motion to close, officially close the meeting.
Motion for.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and now we'll roll right into the official.
Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the applicable portions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been given. This meeting is posted on the bulletin board located in the corridor of this building and published in the newspaper on January 10, 2020. Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Here.
Councilwoman Gingrich is absent. Councilman Burns?
Here.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Here.
Councilman Guadano?
Here.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Here.
Okay, item number four, approval of the monthly reports as listed.
Motion for.
Second.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Yes.
Item number five, Resolution 20-132, bills and payroll. Just so you note, there's been a slight change. We have to increase the bill list by $1,450. This is for the purchase of masks. So the amounts are changing for the bills. It'll be $6,377,761.25. Payroll stays the same. Total goes to $7,846,701.76.
I make the motion with the correction.
Yes.
Second.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Yes.
Item number six, public hearing on ordinance 20-070A, an ordinance of the Township of Berkeley, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending the township code of the Township of Berkeley so as to amend Section 7-35.2 entitled Handicap Parking on Street for Private Residences. This is Sheffield Drive. The meeting is now open for comment on the ordinance.
Motion to close and adopt, second.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Yes.
Okay, item number seven, public hearing on ordinance number 20-080A, an ordinance of the Township of Berkeley, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending the township code so as to amend Chapter 7 entitled Traffic. This is Benanear Drive. The meeting is now open for public comment on the ordinance.
Motion to close and adopt, second.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Yes.
Item number eight, public hearing on ordinance number 20-090A, this is a bond ordinance providing for improvements to the Manitoba Park Schoolhouse by and in the Township of Berkeley in the County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appropriating $1,750,000, therefore, including a grant from the New Jersey Historic Trust in the amount of $656,537, and authorizing the issuance of $1,41,393 in bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof. The meeting is now open for comment on the ordinance.
Motion to close and adopt, second.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Yes.
Item nine, public hearing on ordinance number 20-100A, bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of and payment of the purchase price for certain real property, including real property commonly known as 32 Fifth Lane, and improvements thereon by and in the Township of Berkeley in the County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appropriating $1,750,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,665,000 bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof. The meeting is now open for comment on the ordinance.
Motion to close and adopt, second.
Question on the motion? That's, just look, the public note, that's not the purchase price.
Correct, and there's a public hearing on that purchase later on.
Thank you.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Yes.
And this is the ordinance that I was just referring to, the purchase of that property is $317,000. So this is public hearing on ordinance number 20-110A, an ordinance of the Township of Berkeley, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition of Block 1694, Lot 153, for $317,000 in accordance with NJSA 40A:12-5A1. It's known as the Cita Moffitt property on Fifth Lane. The meeting is now open for comment on the ordinance.
Motion to close and adopt, second.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Yes.
Number 11, introduction to ordinance number 20-120A, an ordinance of the Township of Berkeley, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending the township code of the Township of Berkeley, renaming a township road. This is to name Dorino Way. May I have a motion to introduce?
Motion to introduce, second.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Yes.
Item number 12, introduction to ordinance number 20-130A, an ordinance of the Township of Berkeley, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, rescinding ordinance 20-05OAB. This is the one we were talking about in the caucus meeting. It's residential permit parking at Deal Avenue. May I have a motion to introduce?
Motion to introduce, second.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Yes.
Item number 13, introduction of ordinance 20-140A, an ordinance of the Township of Berkeley, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending the township code so as to amend Section 26-1.23 entitled Use of Motor Vehicles on Beaches.
Motion to introduce, second.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Abstain.
Okay, Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Yes.
Number 14, introduction of ordinance 20-150A, an ordinance of the Township of Berkeley, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending the township code of the Township of Berkeley so as to amend Section 14-42.6 entitled Payment for Extra-Duty Assignments.
Motion to introduce, second.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Yes.
Number, item number 15, introduction to ordinance 20-160A, an ordinance of the Township of Berkeley, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending the township code of the Township of Berkeley, amending Chapter 26 entitled Beaches and Recreational Areas so as to create Section 26-4 entitled Commemorative Plaque Program.
Motion to introduce, second.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Yes.
Item 16, introduction of ordinance 20-170A, an ordinance of the Township of Berkeley, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending the township code of the Township of Berkeley so as to amend Section 13-1.7 entitled Additional Required Inspection and Fees.
Motion to introduce, second.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Council, Councilman Burns?
Easy.
[laughing].
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Yes.
Item number 17, introduction of ordinance 20-180A, an ordinance of the Township of Berkeley, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, establishing the occupancy limitations of the township code so as to revise Chapter 12, Property Maintenance, Section 12-3.5, Certificates of Compliance.
Motion to introduce, second.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Yes.
And our final ordinance for introduction is number 20-190A, an ordinance of the Township of Berkeley, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending the township code of the Township of Berkeley, amending Chapter 26 entitled Beaches and Recreational Areas so as to amend various sections. Please remember that this is amended as discussed in the caucus meeting.
Motion to introduce, second.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.
Council President Bushio?
Yes.
And item 19, Resolution 20-133R, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve item numbers 1 through 27, resolution numbers 134 through 161?
I make that one, second.
Roll call. Councilman Bakion?
Yes.
Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noonan?
Yes.
Councilman Guadano?
Yes.
Councilman Gross?
Yes.[1617.12]